I'd like to call the annual board meeting of the Marshalltown Community School District to order. This is the time and the place for the September 4th meeting. Welcome to all of you in our audience, and welcome to those individuals who will be watching us on delayed broadcast. Allow me to introduce the directors at the table with me. Starting on my right, we have Ross Harris, Janelle Carter, Mike Miller. On the left, we have Karina Hernandez, Sean Heitman, and Ben Fletcher. I would like a round of applause.
So far.
So far. And to my right at the center table is Paulette Newbold. She is the Secretary Treasurer of the Board. To my left is Dr. Theron Schudy, is the School District Superintendent, and I am Bea Niblock. We have a pink sheet on the speakers' table for anyone to sign up who would like to speak to the Board during public comment section or at one of the items on the agenda. If you have not done that and want to do that, please feel free to do so now. You will have five minutes to address the Board. The Board, according to Board policy, will not be able to reply to your comments, but we thank you for them anyway. Please read with me the district mission.
We develop learners who have knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
Stand as you're able and join me in the Pledgeable Emissions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are.
There are.
We had a, we did have a couple chan, actually, a couple changes that you were notified of. One of them had to do with the receiving of the recognition tonight for the Jeans' Day.
Committee.
Oh, the other was, we added in the consent agenda a recommendation for approval for a facilities naming committee.
And, Mr. Spaghetis, did you, do you have a change?
Yes, I have one change on the personnel items. Under the header "appointments," item number six removed.
Is removed. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Miller, Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven zero.
We have our mentor coordinator, Sue Cahill, who's brought along some of our new teachers here, so we want them to come introduce themselves and where they teach and where they're from, so happy to have them here.
If I may, we won't all reach around the table, so I'll use the microphone. I do want to introduce some of our newest teachers to the Marshalltown District. These are part of the 26 first-year teachers to our district that we have working with us this year. They went through three days of mentor training in August and have been in their classrooms working away. We have this year 26 new teachers, 15 on initial license, five on standard license, four on master's licenses. We have one on a school counselor license and one on a school nurse license. We also have 22 teachers who are in their second year of the mentoring program. So I will ask each of our new teachers just to introduce themselves, where they teach, and maybe where they graduated, or a previous district that they were from.
Well, hello, I'm Ryan Carroll, originally from New York. The words to give me away are huge and coffee, so those are two words that'll give me away. Otherwise, you wouldn't know him from New York. Originally went to SUNY Geneseo for my bachelor's in history and political science, came out to Iowa, went to, lived in Ames, ISU, for my master's of arts of teaching and some chemistry work, and now teach project Lead the Way Engineering and Computer Science at the high school. So really excited to be here, and thank you so much for the opportunity, really appreciate it.
I have a much shorter, less interesting story than that. I'm Tessa Cohen. I just graduated from University of Northern Iowa in May, so it's my first teaching job ever, and I'm teaching eighth grade math at Miller.
I'm Morgan Benteen. I just graduated from Luther College in May, so this is my first teaching job as well, and I'm teaching seventh grade social studies at Miller.
My name is Beth Leedy. I grew up in Wisconsin, went to Grinnell College, graduated with a degree in history and education, and just moved back to Iowa from Washington, DC.
I'm Christina Malcolm. I live in Marshstown, and I am the school nurse at Miller. I went to Hawkeye Community College and the University of Iowa, go Hawks, and previously I was at Unity Point and McFarland.
Is there a team in Iowa City? That's one.
My name is Ruth Cleaver, and I recently graduated from Iowa State, yes.
There we go.
And I'm teaching math and science, fifth grade, at Lenahan.
I'm Kristin Stachis, and originally from Grinnell, Iowa, but I've been gone for about 18 years in Duluth, Minnesota, and also Mexico, teaching for the College of St. Scholastica, and also in Duluth Marshall School, so can't get too far away from Marshall. I'm glad to be back in my home homeland, and I'm teaching at the high school Heritage Spanish. I graduated from Grinnell College.
And just to show, we have some other teachers already involved. Two of my new teachers said they couldn't make it tonight, they apologized that they were doing coaching duties already, so we appreciate that our new teachers are jumping in, not only in the classroom, but in our district as well. Thank you very much.
Welcome to all of you. You're doing?
Yep.
So Karina, come on up. It seems to be a common occurrence these days. So on August 21st and 22nd, our first two days of all staff being together for pre-service, we had a Jeans' Days and Bobcat Peril Days, which the teachers, well, our staff, overall staff, really enjoy, and so we did it on behalf of the tornado relief, and so we've got a check to give you on behalf of all employees of Marsh Town for $2,768, plus a separate check, which I don't know how much that's worth, plus the hell check. Your first voting, any, is for tornado relief.
Definitely, in my account.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes of our last board meeting? Anything of note, other than what you've shared with us, Mr. Spaghetis, on personnel? Looking at the inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have one from the National Hispanic Institute for Summer Leadership Programming. We have one for federal funds received from the Iowa Department of Public Health, and we have a Level III student out to Woodward Granger Community School District. In open enrollments, we have two in, nine out, and one denial. Any questions about those? Any questions on the bills? Looking at the Facilities Naming Committee. Do you want to scroll so that we can see all the names, please? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Facilities Naming Committee as presented?
That's part of the consent agenda.
It'll be separate, yeah, sorry, 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 sorry. Now, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Send it.
Fletcher Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven zero. Mr. Hinderhofer, you have a statement to make to the Board?
My name is Steve Hinderhofer. I get to teach health education down at Miller, mostly eighth graders, and a pretty neat deal. I just want to, just a couple points of thanks. One, just for the health funds that the Board approved last year, and for all the help that Dr. Stevenson gave just getting those things in order for us as a health PE team, some of the new equipments, just, it's really neat to teach with some newer stuff, and I think the kids are going to really enjoy the activities. Second point, just thanks again for getting Manny Scott here last year. It continues to be something that inspires many of us at the school, and it's a talking point for a lot of the kids to reopen some of those really hard conversations and to continue to build trust with them and really make a difference. And then just finally, on behalf of just my wife and I, and our three kids, we just really appreciate being able to have a job here. I appreciate you signing the checks and just doing all the tough work of being on the Board. I know it's not easy by any means, you get a lot of, a lot of hard stuff, and we just, we so very appreciate that. We'll continue to think about you and pray about you, not because you need it, but just because it's really tough. And just want to thank you again for all that you do, and thanks again for the opportunity, so appreciate your time.
Are you doing? If the three of you would like to come up.
Try to get the table. Any policy review?
Yeah, sure. Does that mean you're up next or something?
I don't think so.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Tonight, I'm going to share with you some information that was shared with our School Improvement Advisory Committee last May, I believe, was when we met. We had received the 2017-2018 Iowa Assessment scores back, and this is the first opportunity, I guess, for some of you to see those results. And so what you found in the Board docs was an assessment notes template, I guess, blank sheet of what we used with the committee, of which I will, I'll read you the answers, because I know the answers to those questions, but if you have questions at the end, I'll try my best to answer those or get back to you. And then the four other attachments that were included in Board docs were too specific to the 2016-2017 school year, 2016-17 proficiency, as well as 2016-17 growth, and so that would mean how students grew from when they took it in 15-16 to 16-17. And then you also have identical documents, let's say 2017-2018 on the top, that talk about percent proficient on the Iowa tests in reading and math and science, and growth, so how much the kids grew when they took this test in February. So it's a lot to look at, but I'm just going to catch you up on some of the big takeaways, at least in my analysis, and what we talked about at SIAC, and Ben and Karina, feel free to chip in at the end if I didn't capture it all, because it is a lot of data, and it's really only two or three years, so imagine, you know, we've been taking this test for a long time since the, at the high-stakes level, since No Child Left Behind dawned upon us. So in terms of percent proficient by grade, by year, we did see some really nice positive increases in third grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade, in the overall percentage of students proficient. We also saw cohort growth, which is something that the Board asks about frequently. That's kind of a tough one for us, because we have around 20 to 25 percent mobility, but according to what Iowa Assessment shared, our cohort that went from sixth grade to seventh grade went down, but our cohort that went from seventh grade to eighth grade, as well as our eighth to ninth graders in 2017-18, went up. And the one I'm most amazed by and impressed by is that our eighth to ninth graders went up from 57 percent proficient to 76 percent. Moving on from reading to math, and just as kind of a basic, the reading test is two parts. There's a Part I and a Part II test that kids take regardless of what grade they're in, grades three through 11. In terms of math, our third graders, ninth graders, and 10th graders in 17-18 showed an increased percentage of students proficient, whereas in fourth, fifth, sixth, and eighth grade, our percent proficient actually decreased, which is not something I'm, that we're happy to report, and as you've heard, we're doing lots of things. And at the end, I'll kind of give you a summary of the "so now what," now that we know all this information. In science, third, eighth, and 10th grade increased the percentage of students proficient, while fourth, fifth, and sixth went down. The second bullet in that note sheet talks about trends and cohort growth, so cohort growth is your document that looks like this, and this is based on their national standard scores. So in reading, from 15-16 to 16-17, as well as 16-17 to 17-18, we found some large growth in our students from third to fourth grade, as well as, again, our eighth to ninth graders. In math, we found a pretty large average growth as kids went from fifth to sixth grade, as well as ninth to 10th grade. So it's kind of interesting to think about, at least in Marshalltown, what that means, because kids are transitioning buildings, they're transitioning how they, how we present math to them, I guess, in some ways. So I'm wondering if that has something to do with those large growth areas that we And then the next two pieces are maybe a little bit deep in the detail for a Board, but they're something that our teachers look at and our principals, because we want to dig into the tests and see what objectives are we testing that our kids seem to be relatively strong at, or are areas we need to put more attention or focus on in our core curriculum? And in reading, the Iowa Assessments takes all the reading questions, which there's roughly, I think, about 40 per test. It depends on the grade of the student, and they divide them into, either the questions are asking kids to recall key ideas, ideas and details, which could be found by going back in the text, or it's asking them to think about the craft and structure of the reading passage, whether it's fiction or nonfiction, and how the author structured the content. And then the third one is kind of that advanced-level synthesis and application where they're asking kids to be able to integrate knowledge and ideas they might have background knowledge about and apply to the questions after reading the reading. And after reading this and studying this, I've looked at it multiple times now, I, we kind of have a little bit of everything going on in those three areas, so it was really interesting to me, like key ideas and details, for example, was the highest of those three areas for most of our grades, but then dropped to be the lowest for most of our grades in 17-18. So it was kind of a, that was a surprise to me, because sometimes key ideas and details is lower on the depth of knowledge, you're going right back to find it in the, in the story. Craft and structure was, on average, the highest across all grades in 17-18, which is, which is a good thing. And then integration of knowledge and ideas, which is the most high-level application of reading skills or comprehension skills, was the lowest for our students in most grades. And then the math portion is a little bit more complicated, as you can imagine. They don't break the questions down into just three areas, they look at all the math And operations and algebraic thinking, that was a relative strength for our students across both years' data in all grades. Numbers and operations in base 10 was really variable. We were, it was a strength in some grades and not in others, and the same was true with fractions, and all of these things are ringing bells in my ears, at least in conversations I've heard with teachers, about things kids struggle with, and how that impacts how they accelerate through our math options or offerings. Measurement and data was a relative strength for our students, whereas geometry was a relative weakness. And again, I've heard with geometry, too, that in almost all of our grade levels, we don't teach geometry till the end of the year, fourth quarter, and this test is given every February. So in the teacher's minds, sometimes that's, plays into how well the kids remember the things they learned in last year's geometry. Ratios and proportional reasoning was a relative weakness for our students. Number system had low accuracy across the board, as did expressions and equations, but statistics and probabilities had a strength. So as I said at the beginning, I really couldn't pinpoint one or two areas that our curriculum is addressing at markedly different levels than others. We just kind of have a lot of work to do in all areas. I think our core continues to need to be strengthened across the board. At the bottom, you see the three, two, one, the three things you discovered, two interesting things and one question you might have. So that's something at SIAC that they did in partners, I believe, if I remember correctly. But I challenged myself to do this again, after looking at it three months ago, and to see, compare my answers now to what I had done. And the three things I discovered that you may have found also, or have thought differently, was that our two years of growth data and proficiency data show a pretty stable picture, except for a few bumps, with our third graders and upper grades showing some nice growth and jump, and jumps in reading and math, and we saw this across all three subjects. Three things I discovered when I looked at some of our cohort data would be that ideally, when our kids take this test in third, fourth, and fifth grade, that we would have an average percent of 60 to 65 percent proficient, which would then enable us, when they're in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, to try to move that arrow closer to 65 to 70 percent, so that when they're in ninth through 11th grade, we have 75 to 80 percent of our kids proficient, which would indicate a strong core, if 80 percent of our kids were proficient. I know you're aware, as I am, of all the mobility that we have in linguistic challenges, which reaching that 80 percent is a pretty lofty goal, but I think it becomes even more problematic when our third grade scores are not at the 60 to 65, because it puts the pressure on the upper grades, too, to make even more than a year's growth as the kids move along, which is why we've done a lot in the last couple of years to incorporate sufficient time into math, back into the elementary school, and try to put some systems in place that start to catch kids quicker, that are struggling with math concepts, because it only becomes more difficult when they ask them to start doing operations and fractions and percentages, so. The third thing that I discovered, sort of, this has been up and down for the last couple of years, but that this state assessment, the Iowa Assessments, and its format, which is a paper pencil test with two parts for math and reading and science, has sunset, with no child left behind. It was always a test that was designed to present a third of the content below grade level, a third at grade level, and a third above grade level, and now we're going to have a new state assessment, and this just came to light last, in the last couple of months. Really, really, really happened this time, and that all districts in the state are mandated to take it in 2019 between March and May 31st. So it's going to be a more, they tell us it's going to be more aligned to the grade level standards, only test the grade level standards, and everyone will have the same shot at taking it at the end of the year. So it'll give us a chance to look at our alignment of our curriculum. We in Marshalltown are going to take it the second week of April, so we're going to kind of let a few others go first, those first six weeks, and we're also not going to push it to the last six weeks, too, because we know we have some issues with attendance around the Easter holidays and in April in our district in particular, so we don't want to make that any more confusing. And then with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, kids in grades three through 11 actually take a reading and an English Language Arts test. So I'm really interested to see how much of that will be writing, and how much of it'll be English language grammar type of questions, which we haven't, we haven't seen any sample tests yet, so we don't know, as well as math. And then the only grades that are testing science are grades five, eight, and 10, which will be very different for us, because we've had our kids take science every year. It will be all online, and it'll be more than multiple choice. The kids will get to write in their answer, I'm sorry, type in their answers, key in their answers, et cetera. It'll require some pretty significant bandwidth and computer familiarity with the keyboard and the Chromebook, so we feel like we'll be in a pretty good place for our kids to do that in April. And that sharing our baseline will be a pretty interesting process for me next spring, because we really don't know at this point. We've heard that it's going to be much more rigorous than this test, but we won't know until we see it. So those are the three things that, that I've discovered through this process. Two interesting things, and I took the word interesting to mean concerning, to be honest, but it's very interesting to me that for some of the content areas in reading and math, that our students are only 40 to 49 percent proficient on average, which means that there is a pretty significant portion of our kids that aren't even at 40, just knowing basic statistics. And that's, you know, a definite sign that we've got to dig in deeper with whatever those mathematical geometry standards, or whatever they may be, that were particularly low, because our, our students aren't getting enough distributed practice or repeated practice with those concepts to be able to, to apply them in a standardized test. Another thing that was interesting or concerning to me was that we have a lot of new pieces here that we have to figure out, because like you heard last spring, we have the ST Math quizzes that tell us our kids are doing really awesome on these certain objectives. We have our Go Math curriculum, which has its own assessments built into it, and then 712 is looking at math curriculum for this year to be purchased in the spring or summer. So we're going to have all these pieces that we need to ensure align with what the state measured us, measures us by for ESSA, as well as the state report cards. So some people like curriculum, I'm one of them, so I'm kind of excited to see how we can take all those things we know, because we have, as Steve said earlier, we've got, we've been blessed with really awesome, great resources, technology, paper, tools, everything that the kids could need, manipulatives to make this work. So I think we have what it takes. And then this year, our pre-K 6 grade levels are meeting once a week, or once every six days, in Professional Learning Communities, which is the book we're talking about soon, to focus on math. And so I think it's going to open up some bigger conversations and understandings around math, and how we can intervene sooner, so that we don't have to, you know, be pushing, pushing with growth to catch up. And then the question I have at the end, that's still lingering for me, is how is the ability for our students to do this online going to increase our proficiency or not? I'm kind of concerned about that, as well as the state's ESSA plan calls for kids to be able to take this in their native language, and so the, my understanding is that the producers of the test are going to make a Spanish language version of the new Iowa Assessment. And so then we'll have an interesting situation on our hands, because how do we determine who that test is appropriate for and who it isn't, and how will that affect our results? So there's a lot of unknowns moving forward with the new Iowa Assessments, and then trying to figure out how to take this information and push it forward in a meaningful way in terms of our math and reading. So that was just an update, and that was kind of how we formatted it at that training, or not training, but meeting. Is there any other things that, this is tracked, maybe taxed in your memory, but it's been four months since we met, either one of you, or does anyone else have any questions?
They've pretty well covered what we went into at SIAC. I think we just, if anything we didn't, you didn't cover, is just that we dug down deeper into some of the grade-by-grade changes, so.
So I spent some time studying this, and you've got me focused now on year-to-year gain. That sometimes comparing our average score with the average score of another district isn't fair, based on the types of students that one district has versus another district. And so you've got me focused on gains, right? That's the right place to focus.
Correct.
And so I spent a lot of time studying this Table 1, Average Gain Scores for Reading, Math, and Science, 2017-2018, and gains, point gains of our district versus the state average or the national average. And it was interesting to me that our gains in grade And it was interesting to me that our gains in grades eight, nine, and 10 generally outpaced the state average in those grades, but the gains in elementary school level generally lagged the state average gains. And I wonder why, and it was, it was pretty, if you go look at the numbers, it's, it's pretty stark that we do better than the state for grades eight, nine, and 10, we do worse than the state average. And so I would, I would think a very reasonable goal would be for our gains to outpace state average gains across the board.
Correct. And that's one of the new features of ESSA. They have, depending on what grade band it is, you know, six to eight different categories that compose our state report card, and one of them is percent proficient. It'll always be that, but now they are figuring in a measure for growth on top of that, which they did with Iowa assessments most recently too. But I saw the same thing, Matt, Mike, and I didn't put it in my notes, but it was interesting to me that we exceeded, in reading, we exceeded the state in growth in third, sixth, eighth, ninth, and 10th. And then that was true also in math, we exceeded in sixth, ninth, and 10th, but in reading, I'm sorry, I misspoke, reading, we exceeded the state in five grade levels, but not quite as much in fourth, fifth, and seventh. And so it made me think, I mean, you can't take the teacher out of people sometimes, but it made me just think as an ESL teacher and understanding how language acquisition works, that our kids aren't going to make as many gains if they're learning and becoming more comfortable with the English language in elementary school, because that's truly what their focus is on. But by the time our kids get to Miller and High School, who've been in our system for a really long time, they're, it's kind of all coming together. And the, the data, the researchers out there would tell you it takes five to seven years to become fully proficient in a second language. I'd argue it takes more like seven to nine, if you are a child that has other at-risk factors. Maybe you live in poverty, or you've moved a lot, or whatever it may be. And so I think that kind of clues in, and we saw this with our dual-language data too, from our Woodbury kids that moved on, is they showed the biggest gains and difference once they hit high school, once they hit eighth grade and beyond.
That, that sounds like a potentially reasonable explanation. Is there anything that you think we're doing different from a curriculum perspective at the lower grade levels, or things we're not doing at the lower grade levels that we are doing a better job of at the higher grade levels? That may be an additional explanation.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, in particular with reading or math, except that I'd say too, there, the kids have developed different relationships. They feel more comfortable at school, their parents are committed to their kids attending Marshalltown schools, they've, you know, all of those kinds of factors kind of fall off. You know, they feel like this is their, their school. I don't know. That's, that's a really great, great, great question that I'd like others to think about too, because I can't think of anything intentionally. Maybe B could weigh in too at the elementary with math and reading.
I think that the thing that we don't know, the unknown here, is that we start testing at third grade. Where were those kids when they started with us in kindergarten? How far below the norm were they? We don't know. So without doing some sort of testing at the kindergarten level and knowing where students are when they come in to our district, we don't know how much they've already grown by the time they get to third grade. We, generally speaking, in a multi-language setting, your students, and we also throw poverty into Marshalltown, but my knowledge of the kindergarten scoring is that students will come in one to two standard deviations below the norm. You can count that as one to two years, you know, for, it's not quite the same, but you could say one to two years. So if we have a student coming in at the kindergarten level, coming in at a three-year-old level, we've grown that child a heck of a lot by the time they get to third grade. So to ask them to be proficient means that not only have we grown the kindergarten first and third grade years, those four years, but we've also grown two more years that they didn't have when they came to us.
Interesting.
So we will always never know where those third graders are and where that baseline is until we test at the kindergarten level.
I think one thing, if it maybe jarred, jarred your memory back when we reported preschool data this summer, that, I mean, if, like, we're doing the preschool reading tests here at the end of September, and on average, we're, on a good year, we'll get to 10 to 12% of our kids proficient in preschool. So, but then if you, we can also pull our private preschool provider data, and over half of their kids are able to pass the end-of-the-year preschool test in September. So we've already got this big of a discrepancy going on, and so it's, like B said, they do the fast reading testing in Kinder First and Second. It's really, and it's a real challenge. They do grow, the kids grow, but I think an important thing to figure out, or at least, I do believe our teachers understand too, that we just can't ever let up. Like, you know, when we said six out of the nine grades grew, it has to be nine out of nine. Like, we can't afford to have a year where our kids don't make gains or growth to match the state average, because they've already had such an inequitable start for a variety of reasons.
One of the things that we should see some benefits through student achievement on in the coming years are the significant effort to get more kids to access a four-year-old preschool program. So that has increased significantly over the course of the last couple of years, so hopefully as those kids start arriving at third grade, they'll be in a better position than maybe what was the case in the past.
I mean, we've done a lot of things at the elementary curriculum level, changes, I think, to try and improve. Is there, is there anything that you see anywhere across the country in your travels, or Theron and your travels, that do anything at the teacher level to reward teachers for student growth? And is that sort of a sacred cow concept that's worth thinking about?
I'll defer to Dr. Shudey on this one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't think there's a valid and reliable test, standardized test, in order to make that kind of assessment. I think it would have to be a multifaceted thing. Many states did adopt early on, with No Child Left Behind, merit or bonus pay-type situations based on standardized tests. Most of them went away from that after a few years of implementation, because a singular test isn't a, it was determined not to be a good measure of teacher effectiveness. Is it possible to, to develop some sort of matrix with a variety of indicators for, particularly growth, because that's what should be measured? I think it's probably possible, is payment for that an effective long-term incentive for higher-quality teaching? That's assuming, number one, that they're not doing the best they can with what they have now. And, you know, the jury's still out. I mean, I think that's a big debate there.
Do we know if anybody, anywhere, has done it anywhere successfully?
Colorado or Tennessee, maybe they did some value-added evaluation procedures, where teachers could earn bonuses based on their end-of-the-year number of kids who, who were able to pass the state test at the end of the year. But I agree with Dr. Shudey, I feel like I read something that they're moving away from that, because it didn't really seem to move the needle in your most at-risk communities anyway. So it wasn't due to lack of quality resources or high-quality teachers. It's just, it's just a different ballgame. It's very challenging.
Well, will that even be fair for the teachers who get?
Would you use your microphone?
Would that even be fair for some of the teachers that, you know, they don't have, you know, the ability to choose their kids? I mean, you can have five, six special ed kids in one classroom, so that's a challenge within itself. They could be quality teachers, but if kids are challenged, you know, if kids are educational challenged, that they have their special ed, then that puts really hard, I mean, it makes it hard for the teachers to advance those kids. So that wouldn't be fair, I think, district-wide.
I hear, I've asked this question before, and I've heard the same answers before, and I always hear, every time I ask it, all the reasons why we can't do it, all the reasons why we shouldn't think about it, and none of the reasons why, well, maybe it does work somewhere. And I never get that answer. And so I'd love to do a book study, we're getting ready to do a book study. I'll bet you somebody's written a book somewhere of how it works. And when you think about all of the levers that you can pull to improve student achievement, you know, we've spent a lot of money on curriculum, we've spent a lot of money on teacher professional development. This is just maybe one more lever we should, we should think about that we've never touched before.
In the past, I think our contractual conversations and negotiations, that would have been probably the time and place to try to put that into the system, but it hasn't happened before, and I'm not sure with the changes that were, that we just had happen to us with collective bargaining, I'm not sure what that means for the future of those conversations, or how teachers would react to that. But I do think too, it just is a very complicated system. That doesn't mean it can't be done.
It is.
I'm thinking about what Karina said, and that, you know, we, I don't know, I think it's around 30% of our K-12 teachers don't have a classroom of their own. They serve ELL, Special Ed, Title I, at-risk. I mean, they, they don't have a group of 20 kids all year, and then, yeah, it doesn't mean it can't be done, it just is, it would be incredibly, and I also worry from the whole child perspective of, I don't know if I want teachers focusing solely on, you know, the finish line of May 15th, or whatever it may be, and one test, and a child's ability to do blank 30 questions. I would hope we're raising.
I hope so.
I think in order, I mean, just thinking about our mission and vision, there's a whole lot more to, to life than just, whoops, I'm not going to say that on camera. We would love all the children to pass the standardized test, but we'll just leave it at that.
So you look at grade three this year versus the 1718 versus 1617, all three coming in at a higher number, so that's encouraging. And maybe we're starting to see the trend of all the initiatives that's awesome. Where I'm slightly confused is the AEA and the state numbers for 1617 and 1718 on the graphs, they're the same both years on all three graphs. Does that mean the AEA and the state didn't get any better? Am I reading that wrong?
For reading, math, and science.
Well, I mean, look at the first graph, the Figure 2, comparing 1617 to 1718. Our grade three went from 57 to 65, right? If I'm reading that correctly. So this Figure 2 of 1617 says grade three was 57% proficient?
Correct.
And then the next year, we jump up to 65% proficient?
Very.
If I'm reading that correctly.
It's a, it's a very different sample size.
Huh?
It's a very different sample size.
Right. No, I understand that. Percentages change. But if you look at the legend, if you look at the, the blue and the orange.
He's saying the blue and the orange are the same on Figure 2.
They're the same on all three graphs.
I'm saying the state, we might have variations when we go from a, one class of third graders to the other, with 300 to 300. But the state's got 10,000, 100,000.
The numbers are identical on all three graphs on every year?
Yeah.
I just, just don't know if we had a typo, or maybe they were using that as a baseline, I don't know, I just, because we show us getting better, but it shows AEA and state staying the exact same every number, every grade on all three, all three graphs. So.
Well, I definitely know the person to ask that question to, because they were able to generate these reports out of Iowa testing programs, because they have all of that in there for us, and then they send these pre-populated ones too. So I'll check into it and see, maybe we're not as discrepant as we look possibly at some grades, or even maybe we're above the state.
Well, I don't, well, it is surprising they're all the same. With the sample size as large as the state, I would expect it to change very, very little year to year.
You might have just thrown a wrench in the entire system. I'll have to go back and re-calculate everything.
So, so looking forward with the change in the test, do you feel like we've, and the hope that it's more aligned to the core, do you feel like the curriculum changes and the supplemental curriculum changes we've, or additions we've had, are they lined up better with that? Were we, were we moving in that direction, or were we trying to line up with more with the current test? How do you feel like we're set up going forward?
We definitely picked curriculum, planned it, and scoped and sequenced it out based on the state standards, not on this test.
Yeah.
Which is a process, because the curriculum you get is from different, is sometimes matched for different states, and Iowa has its own version of things. So now the question, the unknown, is going to be how aligned is the state test to the state standards? Because if it is, we're in good, good position. And I really feel excited about the conversations that are happening about, so what if they don't learn it in the PLCs that teachers will be working in? Because in the past, we didn't think about interventions for math. We've thought a lot about interventions for reading and have a whole, whole system and menu of things going on in that area, but not so much with math or science. So we're putting a lot more science back into K-6, and we're also putting math interventions in, and I think all of that'll have a trickle-down effect on reading.
So, so who writes, who creates the assessment test? Your comment was, we look, what we hear about it?
Yeah, they put it out. They put an RFP out for it this summer, and then vendors bid on it, and they have to meet certain criteria, like they're going to vet the sample items with X number of people and do all the systems, and then the DE grants a contract to them, is my understanding of how this is.
But it was the Iowa testing program.
It is, it's, it's somehow, I believe it's in conjunction with Iowa testing programs and Pearson Education, somehow they're.
Pearson distributes it maybe, written by?
It was in litigation, so I kind of lost track of how it all ended up in the end.
So when they develop the assessment test for the students in the state of Iowa, do they gain input from different districts and different regions on what should be in the test, or is it somebody sitting somewhere that says, I know how to write in Word all the questions for not only the state of Iowa, but I can do it for Mississippi and Alaska and California?
They do get teachers, they pay teachers to be in like committees to vet the tests and read the sample items and help write questions, who are grade-level experts. But I also know that these companies help create tests for other states who've already had their ESSA plans approved by the federal government, which Iowa was, was waiting on. So it's not a why, there isn't a lot of variance in what the tests actually all look like in the end.
Okay. And that, and that process of vetting happened with Smarter Balanced and Part, the two regional, national tests that were developed, but I think with the expediency for which this test had to be ready after the legislature landed on, re-landed on the Iowa assessments, I don't think that there's a whole lot of that going on. I think it's just being developed with the understanding that it will be much more aligned to the Iowa Core than the previous test. And the Department of Ed had commissioned a study, well, a statistical analysis of the correlation between the Iowa Core and the former Iowa assessment tests, and it came back that the reading test, or the math test was minimally core-aligned, and the reading test was even less aligned than, than the math test. So, I mean, I think that concern has been loud and clear. Does that in and of itself explain kids' performance on the Iowa assessments? No, but again, you know, it makes sense to assess what you're teaching and how and when you're teaching it. So we're optimistic that this will be better aligned. We're also optimistic that moving into year two and three of some of the supplemental personalized learning that we've embarked on with ST Math, with Lexia, that will, and then with the advent of preschool, numbers increasing significantly over the last couple of years. Hopefully, all of those things will result in students being in a better place when we begin to assess them in third grade.
The hard thing is we, we're going to use these numbers, and we're all looking forward to the next year, and we can start seeing some statistical trending that goes on, but we have no or little input to what the tests are going to be about, how they're going to be worded, and is there an avenue of feedback after the test that says, hey, you guys, this, this test is, you missed the mark? Do you know what I mean? Or is it just, hey, it is what it is, and suck it up, and every state's got the same issue, and sorry, but we're going to measure you, and?
And that's why there was a big movement too with. And that's why there was a big movement too with No Child Left Behind, that parents could waive their child's participation and that they felt kids were being over-assessed and assessed inappropriately and given assessments that didn't accurately measure their child's skills. And these tests were being used for such high stakes, which I just, Mike, I was thinking too, that one thing that might be contributing to that eighth grade and up bump is it becomes really high stakes for them. Meaning what classes are you, can you get or take in high school and/or the senior year plus dual credit things? Like you have to pass these, all three of these tests, or you don't get to take those classes in MCC and beyond. So the kids, I mean, I'd hope they push themselves all the time, but they really have something to lose when they don't push themselves at that age. So.
Other questions for Dr. Stevenson?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the instructional support levy.
At our last Board Finance Committee meeting that we had, we had some discussions surrounding funding, ways in which we could fund additional dropout prevention or at-risk programs that we are needing here in the district. And so one of the things that we talked about was the Instructional Support Program and how that is funded. So we just wanted to give you guys kind of a brief overview of that program. What the Instructional Support Program allows districts to do is to increase our programming by 10% of our regular program cost. So for instance, our district this year has a $36 million regular program cost. So 10%, 10% of that, you know, would be your 3.6 million. And basically, what you can do with this money is use it for any general fund purpose, but you can't supplant certain programs like dropout prevention and special ed. There are two ways for districts to impose this levy. It can be imposed for a five-year period, which is what the Marshalltown School District has currently done. We are in year three right now of a five-year period. That five-year period is simply imposed by board, board action. If a district wanted to do it for a 10-year period, then that would have to go through a formal election process. The Instructional Support Program is funded through either 100% property tax or a combination of property tax and income surtax. To get to that 10% cost, it used to be that the state would put in a portion for state aid. They have not funded the state aid portion since Fiscal 11. So unfortunately, districts now are actually getting up to that 10% of programming that we are allowed. Just some simple statistics, 82% of Iowa school districts are utilizing an income surtax to fund this program. Of those 271 districts, 65% is generated through the income surtax with the remaining through property tax. And your surtax can vary between, last year it varied between 1 and 13%. Now, the Marshalltown Community School District is currently not using the income surtax to fund this program. We are, we are funding it with 100% property tax. In our discussions and how to fund additional programming needs without impacting the property tax rate overall, we talked a little bit about, you know, the potential to shift some of the funding of this program out of a property tax funding into an income surtax funding. That slide that you see right there is just what the Marshall County School Districts have assessed for income surtax rates over the last two income tax reporting years. So as you can see, in 2016, I think Marshalltown was the only school district in the county that was not utilizing the income surtax. And then last year, a couple other districts did not utilize it for 2017 either. The history of our school district, as you can see, the first column is the unadjusted instructional support dollars. That's that 10% that the law allows you to increase your budget by 10%. The adjusted instructional support program dollars is minus the state aid portion that is no longer funded. So for Fiscal 19, the year that we are currently in, our 10% budget increase would have been about 3.7 million. But because the state is not funding the state aid portion of it, what we are receiving for this year is two, just over $2 million. So we are actually only getting about 55% of that additional funding. We in Marshalltown School District are funding that $2,028,000, 100% property tax. There is no income surtax component of that. That equates to about $1.90 in your current tax rate.
Paul, real quick, I didn't, so the, the unadjusted is that 10%. 2 million is what we're doing. Is the 2 million just the number we've chosen? Or is that what's kind of mandated somehow?
It's all formula-driven. And the state aid portion was originally intended to equalize this for districts such as ourselves that had a low per pupil valuation. But as I said, they stopped funding, the state stopped funding their portion of it back in 2011. So now we have, it's, it's all formula-driven by what the state per pupil valuation is compared to what our per pupil valuation is. So the part, the difference between the 3.6 and the 2 is what would have originally been funded by the state.
Okay.
It's all formula-driven. What we get to choose as a board or as a district is how you fund that $2 million. Right now, it's completely funded by property tax. But the income surtax is actually a shift from the property taxpayers to the income taxpayers. And it's a surtax, so it's a tax on the tax. So if you don't owe any state income tax, the income surtax is not going to impact you at all. It is only on, it's a tax on the tax. The incomes, the income tax base for Marshall's, Marshalltown School District in 2016 was about $25 million. So it would be calculated, any surtax would be calculated on something in the area of probably around $25 million.
So the 10% shown by other districts would fully fund that number?
Say that again?
So 10% of 25 million is 2.5 million? So the 10% from the other districts would fully fund?
Yes. So you have to have at least $1 of property tax to fund your instructional support program. For the current year for Marshalltown School District, we could have assessed up to an 8% income surtax. And that would have shifted all but about $26,000 of that 2 million to the surtax funding. So you can either choose 100% property tax or property tax and income surtax. But there has to be a property tax component.
Is this a, forgive me for asking a dumb question. So right now, this is going to get us $2,028,000 in this fiscal year, right?
Yes, we are getting.
This program?
$2,028,000 for this program this year.
And so you're talking about, and we're using all, it's being all funded by property taxes.
Correct.
It's $1.90 of my 40 bucks per thousand rate or whatever, right? Total tax rate for, at my, at my, at my house, right?
Total, consolidated, yes.
Yep. So are you talking about, and you're talking about, let's shift some of that away maybe from property tax and move it to this income surtax. Are, are you doing this to increase the amount of money, that $2,028,600? Or are you doing it just to fund that same number in a different way?
Yep. So let's go to the next slide.
We're buying down property tax rates?
Yes. So the next slide will show also our dropout prevention programming. Our dropout prevention programming is funded 100%, well, 75% is, of the program is funded through property tax. There is no other funding component available for the dropout prevention. You can't do an income surtax for dropout prevention. So we have, in our discussions, I've heard a lot about, you know, we have lots of needs in this area for programs. And we have some capacity in our dropout prevention programming area that we have not tapped in the last three years. So you can see on the right-hand side, on the right-hand side, your dropout prevention is limited to 5% of your certified enrollment times your district cost per pupil. So there is a formula for that also. So you can see what our maximum modified supplemental amount that we could ask for each year, and then what we actually did ask for in those years. So in the last three years, we have not asked for all of that capacity to fund that program. The three years prior to that, we did, we asked for 100% of what we could ask for, for that programming. The column on the very right-hand side is the total property tax rate for the school district, not the consolidated rate that you were talking about, just our school district rate. And so with that capacity that is there, that we aren't using for dropout prevention, we could pick that up in, in property taxes if we shifted some of the instructional support program funding to an income surtax. So it would have a zero impact, a net zero impact on your property tax rate and shift some of the funding for the ISL to your income taxpayers.
So I'd like to separate those two if this ever comes up, because I think there is, I think there is good reason to buy down the instructional support levy with the surtax. And there may be good reasons to increase our dropout prevention levy. But I think those are two separate questions. I don't know that they need to be tied together. I think if we need to increase that levy, we should increase that levy. If not, we don't. If there's, if there's good reason to, let's, let's hear it. And if we would rather use the surtax than property tax value, we could do that regardless of if we're going to increase that levy.
Right.
I'm, I think, you know, I want to hear more about it, but I think the surtax is a good idea. I like the idea of shifting away. I've asked the question a couple of years ago to somebody why we hadn't done it. But I guess that's, that's my initial feedback is we could do that without this, or we could do this without the other.
You are correct.
Sorry.
Looking at this, it gets me thinking about the whole dropout prevention program. And are we really spending $1.3 million on dropout prevention? What are we spending that all on? Is that really effective? How many dropouts do we hit? How many is that per, and so I get into this whole line of thinking that doesn't necessarily have a lot to do with the point you're trying to make.
So in every, well, and, and part of the answer to that question comes every November, December, when you were asked to approve the at-risk plan, which, and if you recall last year, we came before you in the fall, I believe it was. It was in conjunction with that November, December meeting. And the board approved a 13 cent per thousand increase for at-risk purposes to help support the summer school programming that we were going to do across the district. And then it was determined in the spring, when we adopted the budget, that there wasn't a need to increase the budget for that purpose, which probably was not an accurate assessment at that time. But it's, you know, fortunately, we had carry over and could weather that. But that's just an example of something that may come back up, you know, as we talk about the at-risk plan, not only to appropriately fund the degree of the program that we offered last year, but I think there's a desire to expand the reach to more kids in the coming year as well. Hopefully, within the month, we'll have a report on how students did with that program and what kind of gains or lack of loss we saw. Because a lot of time with summer school, it's about not slipping, not sliding back. And so we should have some good data to see if our students, how well they sustain their learning from the previous year coming into the new year with that.
But that's the context I would like to consider the at-risk budget is here's the, here's the program or reason we need to increase the budget.
Right.
Not necessarily in the context of the surtax.
Right.
Well, and wasn't the reason that we dropped, you can see from fiscal year 16 to now, we dropped from $1.86 to $1.11. Wasn't it because we weren't using all of the money?
Yes.
Was there a reason there? Or it wasn't just an arbitrary change?
Yeah. No, there, the district was asking and receiving more funding than they were actually using for a number of years, which led to a significant carryover and the decision that, you know, we shouldn't be a bank for people's money. If there's not a need and a use, then we shouldn't be asking for it. So the former finance director, just prior to my arrival, had, had adjusted the budget accordingly. That being said, there's significant needs and uses for those funds. Because as we were talking about with the student achievement, we're still not where we need to be in terms of addressing the achievement gaps that we have with students and, and raising the bar. So we, we will not ask for increases just for the sake of having increases. They will be attached to research-based or high-quality programming or offerings that we believe will make a significant difference for kids if and when that, that time comes. And summer school, most recently, was one of those things.
But I do think, I mean, I think you can make a case for the surtax on its own to buy down our current tax rate to, I think it's, most, most districts do it, as you noted. And we have one of the higher property tax rates around. So I think regardless of what happens with the at-risk budget, you can make a case for the surtax. I don't know this, but I would, I would think it's a less, less regressive tax. I guess more progressive tax, whichever, than property tax. So I'd generally be in favor of it, but I do need to learn more about it.
So this isn't changing the amount of money that I, or a taxpayer pays in taxes. It just shifts the buckets around. Is that an accurate statement?
It would not change your.
Overall.
Property tax overall.
It would change your property tax.
The, just the dollars of tax that I pay, not property tax, the dollars of tax.
It would increase yours.
It would, it would affect those people who pay income tax. Because not everybody in town pays income tax. So what?
But if they're not paying an income tax, they're probably not paying property tax.
Well, it could be, it could be retired people that own their home that, that are not paying income tax, that are paying property tax.
Even renters pay property tax in a sense. They pay.
There's a, the, yeah.
So those people that pay property tax and pay income tax are going to pay the same amount of dollars of tax? Is that what we're saying?
Not necessarily. It's going to shift it around a little bit, right? Because it's based on two different measures. So if you're, if you have, if your income is, if your income taxes are substantially higher, the delta between your income tax and the average and your property tax, or your property value and the average is different. That's where.
So who are the winners and who are the losers in this then?
Nobody wins.
Well, no, if you don't pay income tax, it sounds like, it sounds like if you don't pay income tax, you're a winner.
Rephrase it. Who's more impacted and who's less impacted?
It depends on what you do. If you just simply shift how we fund the instructional support program from property tax to income tax, you're never going to generate more than the $2,028. So if that's, you know, if you want to look at the income surtax all on its own and not look at other programming needs or, you know, the impact on the overall tax rate, in that case, it's neutral. But if you want to create more capacity in your tax rate to add additional programs.
This is how you have to do it.
This is how you would do that. So then it would be budget, it would be neutral on the property tax side. This is how you would do that. So then it would be budget, it would be neutral on the property tax side.
But you're generating more money.
You're generating more money out of the income surtax.
So this is a way to make it look like your property tax is staying the same, but the school district's getting more money.
But this is why we want it separated into two separate issues. Because we should justify an increase in property tax on its own.
Did I say, yeah, did I say that right?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, it can be. We could, like I said, you could, you could do the surtax without ever increasing our funds.
Right.
She's not, she's not, I would guess that the word, they're not advocating that because they want to keep it neutral.
I, I think that's, this has come up because there's a, there's a possibility of raising the at-risk rate, yes. It's my guess.
Well, it's an option to consider in conjunction with if we were to ask, you know, to increase the at-risk rate as we did last year, but did not do it.
This presentation this evening was merely an instructional.
Yeah, no, it's good. Yeah.
And when we talk about the at-risk budget or the tax rate, fall, spring, winter, whenever that happens, you will have further information. Do you have any questions about the information that was presented?
Kind of. The, it is. The instructional, sorry, the income surtax, doesn't that, does that something we can just implement? Or is there a vote on that or?
It's by board action. So this board did pass a resolution for the five years. It, the current resolution expires on June 30th of 2021.
Sorry, no, I meant the, the surtax. Is that something we can implement by ourselves or is that a referendum thing?
Yeah, you would have to do an amendment to your resolution. But yes, you can do that by amending your current board resolution. And then that amendment gets certified in your April budget.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you for bringing this. Instead of us getting a surprise, the more you feed us this information, the more questions we ask now, the less questions we ask later be. That's how it works. But seriously, thank you. This helps.
But every question was asked as a what-if. We don't know what the what-ifs are going to be yet. So later. Thank you. Moving on to the annual meeting appointments. I would like a motion to approve Paulette Newbold as the board secretary and board treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
There was a Carter and what?
No one.
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. After the grilling, are you still willing to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of school board secretary and treasurer in the Marshalltown Community School District as now or hereafter required by law? So line up all those questions for our coming agenda items. May I have a motion to approve Carter Druken-Riden as a school attorney for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved. Second.
Carter Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. May I have a motion to appoint Alors and Cooney as additional legal counsel for the selected legal issues of the 2018-19 school year?
So moved.
Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0. Moving on to the school board committees. Now is the time for you to send me an email or a note or something that tells me the five committees. You won't be on five, but give me five choices and put them in priority order, please.
So you're assuming we want to change or can we just?
No, you can just say stay the same. And to be quite honest, there is one committee that I will leave the same, and that's the finance committee, just because of the conversations that we've had. So Sean and.
There's no getting out, huh?
No getting out of that one. Not yet. This would not be a good year to change that. But beyond that, it's up for grabs or you can do stay the same. Any questions? Moving on to policies.
Yeah, the policy, which is formerly 601.2, now numbered 601.1 on the school calendar. No changes since the last meeting upon initial review.
May I have a motion to adopt the 601.1 school calendar policy? And waive the second reading?
So moved. Second.
Fletcher Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
This was the second reading?
Yeah, it was the second reading.
It was, but we should have waived it before. So just to get me in the habit of waiving the second reading.
Well, no, we changed.
No, it was, oh, Sean was over there. Sean's the one who made the change and it was two times ago. So we really didn't need to bring this one back. We're just making sure it's not coming back. Okay? Okay. Motion carries 7-0.
Under the first readings, three of the four policies are staying, have stayed the same as when you saw them under initial review. That would be 602.5 formerly, which is now 603.3 on special education. 505.4, which was a new policy on testing program. And the new policy on cardiac emergency response plan, which is 804.7. Those three, there have not been any changes.
May I have a motion to approve as amended and waive the second reading?
So moved. Second.
Harris Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0.
The new policy, 603.1, basic instructional program, which was a combination of IASB's policy as well as pulling together from our existing 602.2, 602.3, and I think it was 602.4. I need to, we need to bring that back because there are some additional desired changes that Dr. Stevenson has found for that.
Do we have that so that people can see it tonight?
No.
Okay. So it will come back then in an initial state?
Yes, correct. And then the same holds true under the initial readings that are listed. 204.9 R1 on the board calendar, 602.4 pilot experiential innovative projects and research, which, as you'll recall, we wanted to get some guidelines for when people, especially our own people, come up with wanting to do research as part of their graduate program. And 602.4 R, we will need to bring those back next meeting as an initial reading. The gist and the essence of what you've read thus far will stay the same. There's just some minor changes that we want to make before it comes as an initial reading.
And 602.4E as well?
The exhibit that goes with those policies. Do you wish that to come back as an initial?
That was the part. I just wanted to add email information supervisor.
So all four of those need to come back?
Yeah, we'll just bring them all back. No urgency on those.
Okay, did you know?
602.8, co-curricular activities. There are no changes. Cross-references IASB exactly. I would say mark as reviewed.
Okay.
602.9, a number change to 602.1. It's also the same as IASB. And there were just a couple of legal reference changes, dates actually. So I would mark as reviewed with the updates. 602.2, or isn't, was 602.9 R1. Also a couple of date changes on the code, but everything else is the same. So I would mark as reviewed. 602.3 is, was 602.9 R, 602.9 R2. The same as before with a couple of one date change and cross-references the same as the other two. So I would mark as reviewed with those slight updates. The last one is 602.10 federal programs. No changes. No IASB reference, but I would mark as reviewed.
Any questions on any of those policies? Any items of note, Andrew? Any legislative news that we should be aware of? Looking at reminders, we have a board work session after our second September meeting. On the 25th, we'll meet at 6:00 PM in the conference rooms. Our next regular board meeting is the 17th. And the policies for review at that meeting will be done by Karina. Do we have any committees that met since the last time that?
Some good news, maybe. We put an all call out to the school community or some new members for SIAC. We have over 20 people replied that they want to join.
And SIAC is meeting three times, November, February, and?
May.
Okay.
So I should have those for formal board approval for the first October meeting.
Okay. What have we done this evening to improve the education of the students in our district?
Put three of those students on the board? And we were going to maybe rearrange the agenda a little bit to fit them? Is that right?
We will, yes.
Are they going to go on?
They will provide updates very early on, right after the consent agenda in terms of what's happening.
I'm willing to sacrifice my turn on policies for Jane to do mine.
Okay. I'm sure that Jane is jumping.
Well, you don't, you didn't sound like you're very busy with everything you're involved in. So I thought maybe you wanted something else to do.
We had quite a discussion on student achievement trends.
That's awesome.
Met new teachers from around the country, coming to Iowa.
Twenty-six new teachers, is that right?
A number of them, yeah.
Not twenty-six here tonight.
Any items for future agendas? I, at this point in my retirement, I'm getting to sorting through boxes of stuff that have accumulated over 41 years in education. And I ran across a banner that I had posted above my chalkboard in a high school classroom when I was working on AP course in literature. We happened to be reading The Red Badge of Courage at the time. And it was not a particularly well-liked book by the students nor the instructor. But the quote, the banner is not my quote for tonight, but it just kind of, I may use it every now and then in the middle of a meeting. The banner said, "If everyone in our school had your attitude, what kind of place would it be?" My quote for tonight comes from Nathaniel Paresik, age four. He says, "You know, it was a good day if you didn't hit or bite anyone." So we can look at things on the, from the perspective of a four-year-old. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Everybody want to go? Carter Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are adjourned.